Well, good evening all. Thank you all for being here. It is August 14th. As you may notice, the Board of Selectmen meeting tonight will be short too. Mr. Kira and Mr. McCoy are traveling this week, so we do have a quorum with the three of us, Mr. Bendel, myself, and Mr. Loud, so we're blazing forward. It's a little bit of a lighter agenda than typical. We're certainly glad to have some guests here we'll be hearing from, so if I could ask out all in attendance to join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. We do have Treasury warrants to approve. They are number three, three A, four, four A, five, five A, six, and six A. Do I have a motion to approve those Treasury warrants?
So moved.
I take that as moved and seconded. Is there discussion or questions about those? I hear none. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. We have minutes from the meeting of May 8th, 2017, that were presented to us. Is there a motion to approve these minutes as written?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on that? I see none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Forgive me. So we'll jump right into our seven o'clock scheduled appointment with Mr. Joseph Martinello, from representing We're One Wilmington. We're One Wilmington Program Update, and also a request to conduct a 2018 Run for Wilmington Walk and Run for Kim Forte on Sunday, April 22nd, and a request to place Festival of Trees signs on the Common from November 27th through December 3rd. Joe, you're a very busy man, so I'll let you get to it, and thank you for being here tonight. Happy summer to you.
Happy summer to all of you.
Thank you.
Hope you're enjoying some time off and time with friends and family. It's the best part about the summer here in Wilmington. A lot of outdoor activities going on, and I'm about to talk about winter. So I'll kick it off with Festival of Trees. So Festival of Trees, annual fundraiser for We're One Wilmington, and the Festival of Trees is a fairly large revenue generator for us to help us get back into the community, and I'll talk about some of our programs after I talk about the road race as well. And our annual Festival of Trees is scheduled for December 2nd and 3rd, so again, it'll be at Villanova Hall, and we're looking just to be able to put some promotional signs up on the Common as we've done in years past. So the week of the actual event, we have signs that say this weekend, Festival of Trees. Save some money that way. And just looking to be able to put those up on the Common. We've done that in the past. We make sure it doesn't interfere with what the Fourth of July Committee does for the activities that they're doing on the Common as well. So that's the first thing I was looking for. In addition to that, just looking to approve the 2018 Kim Forte Walk and the 5K Run for Wilmington. So we're looking at Sunday, April 22nd, for the eighth annual. That would, and then also use of the Fourth of July building, but we'll go through the Fourth of July Committee for that as well. Last year, just for a recap for you to know how we did last year with the road race, and thank you all for your support last year, we exceeded our numbers far over any other year. We had over 566 registrants for the race, and in the previous year, we had just breached 500. So we had a big uptick last year, and it was really nice to see. We actually ran out of numbers. I wasn't happy about that because it means poor planning on my part, but it was, everybody took it with strides, not many complaints around that, and actually even reused my number, gave it to somebody else because I didn't end up running. So that was great. With that, we've been able to give out over $2,700 back to other nonprofits in Wilmington, so 39 nonprofits benefit from the road race, and 2,700 goes back to those nonprofits. When people register for our road race, we allow them to give a portion of their registration fee to any Wilmington nonprofit that they would like to. So it's another way for us to give right back into the community and other nonprofits in Wilmington. In addition to that, some of the other funds that we collect between that and the Festival of Trees, we give out over $7,500 in high school scholarships annually now. So we have three different scholarships that go out. We renamed one of them, the Janet Koloris, in honor of one of our board members that passed away this past year unexpectedly. As a result, it had us relook at our nonprofit and what should we be doing differently. We expanded our board, so we now have a board of 12 Board of Directors. We have a second Vice President as well. So Becky McGrath has taken a Vice President role, and Becky's focusing on the programs and outreach into the community. I'm focusing more on operations and outreach as well. So we overlap in the outreach component, and I'm focused on that operations expansion component. In addition to that, we launched Junior WILD this past year, so really targeting the youth. So it's all demographics, down to my daughter's in second grade and was part of it as well. We have a heavy presence at the middle school. They kicked off the summer this year with a new program called the Kindness Scavenger Hunt. So it had parents integrated with children on a scavenger hunt throughout town, taking pictures of different places, like being at Yentel Farm, and then it ended up culminated with an event at Yentel Farm as well for the kids. So really integrating them into the community itself and giving back. So that was another new program. Another program while launched this year was a Care Package program, and the Care Package program is sending something, small gifts, gift cards, and positive thoughts written by residents, children, in some capacity, or in some instances as well, to individuals with emotional, financial, or medical hardships. So just a random package sent to them with goodness within it and kindness. So we've been able to send several of those out already since we've launched that program, and then just giving back into the community, like things such as National Night Out. We helped with the DJ for that, the Special Olympics we've helped with in the past, and just continuing to give back into this overall community. So those are, that's kind of where the funds go. So.
That's great. You know, Joe, if I may, just maybe, I might be asking you to repeat yourself, and if I am, I apologize. It's my understanding that, you know, we all know that there are so many civic organizations in Wilmington that do so much good work and benefit those that are in need in various aspects. Is it the stated case or the stated cause of We're One Wilmington to really be a, another arm of those organizations, or to bolster the ability of those organizations to help their constituents, as it were?
That's the foundation. The foundation is two acts of kindness, so it's not just around monetary. So it's supporting other nonprofits, supporting individuals within the town itself. So that's the kind of fund, that was the foundation of WILD when it was started.
Yeah. It's so admirable, and obviously, it's motivated so many folks to really get involved. So it's certainly, it's, it brings me great joy to see so many folks really getting their hands dirty and getting involved in these things, and raising funds or raising awareness, or just really benefiting their neighbors. So thank you for all the hard work that you do. So, yeah, questions? Go ahead and start over here.
Thank you, Joe. Great to have you here again. Thanks for all you do, you and your team. Outstanding. Every time you guys do something, it's nothing but first class. So I'm very pleased and proud to support this again, once again, this year. I was pleased to participate last year. I look forward to it, just as long as it doesn't rain cats and dogs like this past year, but that didn't stop you guys. So I appreciate you guys, and every year you seem to outdo yourselves in something new. So I appreciate what you guys are doing, how creative you get, and all the things you do to get back to the community. So I look forward to both these events, and I wish you well.
Thanks.
Kevin?
Yeah, Joe, thank you so much for everything you do for this community and your group. I had firsthand knowledge and saw it on the Festival of Trees three or four years ago when I was involved with Yentel Farm, the fundraising wing. You allowed us to put a table there, and we were even overwhelmed with the response that we got that first year. So like Mr. Bendel just said, you guys do everything first class, and you guys are a great group and a great attribute to this community. So thank you, and I am in full support of everything you're asking to do here today.
Thank you. Jeff, I trust that we don't have, I'm sorry, Joe, I wanted to ask you, the December 3rd, does that coincide with the tree lighting? Is that the same night?
It does, yeah.
That has been the historic, the tradition?
It historically has, yeah.
Good, good. I mean, that seems to make sense, and both events sort of benefit from each other, I think.
Absolutely. There's definitely an influx of residents immediately following the light, the tree lighting, so.
Yeah, I've been there. That tends to be our circuit too, as well. Any conflicts or recommendations?
No, they're way ahead of the game.
Yeah, well, you know, as we sit here in August, thinking about Christmas, it is a little odd, but I compliment you for being, so, planning ahead. I'll tell you what, we are going to take it up a little bit later in our agenda in terms of the votes. I think you probably know how this is going to go, so I'll just let you jump right into the 7:15 appointment to really give us an update of the Relay for Life.
All right. Relay for Life of Wilmington-Bilica now. So it combined last year. Last year was the first year that two communities, or these two communities combined. It's happened in the past. The ACS has been looking at ways of conserving expenditure. Each event has an expenditure against it. You have to rent tents in some instances, as we do in Wilmington. So instead of having multiple towns rent them, can you consolidate costs and put more money towards the research? So last year's the first year we did it, and I'm proud to sit here, well, proud, yeah, I'm proud to sit here to say it was a success. It was a success in the face of tremendous amount of rain. It was, it was an interesting event, and it was interesting to talk to residents of Bilica, to see what their experience was, and to get their, their input and perception of what this event was compared to the one that they've had in the past. And I'm happy to sit here, even through rain, they thought our event was amazing. So it speaks volumes to the commitment that the town puts into it, also the commitment that the residents put into this nonprofit event, and it really was astounding. The energy level last year was higher than the year prior, so the first year we were at the high school. And I think part of that also was a demographic shift, too. We had even more youth teams this past year than we had in the years past, and I think the tech helped bring through that youth, through the youth numbers for us for the event. But in the middle of the rain, people are dancing. You know, we walked through the entire luminaria lab with everybody having umbrellas, and people were out there in the rain and reacted to the rain in order to continue to have the event. In some instances, you would have thought people would have folded and just walked away. We had a higher overnight attendance this past year than we've had in the year prior. So overall, last year's event raised $72,000 year-to-date. So the ACS was very happy. We've already had a recap meeting with them. They want the entire team back. If everyone's willing to come back, and it looks very positive. One of our Bilica Committee members is going to be participating from college. So he was that moved by the way we ran the event in Wilmington last year. So that was actually a really testament. I know prior to the event, he was like, "Oh, I can't do it next year." And in the middle of the event, he's like, "I'm doing it next year. I'm going to do it from college, and my mom's going to be involved in the committee next year." So momentum continues to rebuild now that we're back at the high school. So I thank you guys for, you know, allowing us back at the high school and opening up, you know, Wilmington kindness to another community as well. Yeah, big announcement from the event as we achieved the over a million dollars. So Wilmington as a community has raised over a million. Wilmington and Bilica as two communities have raised close to 1.7 million. Bilica's event's been around for about 15 years, so a little bit longer than ours. And other things, now that the events are combining, another one that we'll promote in the community is one that Bilica started last year, was Pull for Hope. So they actually pull fire trucks, and it's connected to a community weekend in Bilica. So September 17th, they're having Pull for Hope. Right now, there's a team signed up, six participants, but, yeah, they literally pull fire trucks, and they do fundraising around that. The last one that we're waiting to see if we can find somebody in the Tuxbury community to pick up is Bark for Life. That's something that was started by the Wilmington Relay for Life, but we're looking for a community member in Tuxbury to embrace that if they want to continue doing that. So Wilmington will continue to embrace and drive the coordination of the Relay for Life, and the other communities will help pick up these other American Cancer Society-associated events as well. So, yeah, looking for the support on June 15th for what will be the second annual Wilmington-Bilica, but some people are still holding on to the 10th annual because they want to hit the milestone for Wilmington Relay for Life.
Wow. There's a lot there, and it's funny. Again, here we are in August. We're talking about next June.
Yeah.
Again, a testament to your organizational skills, clearly. As you know, I had the great pleasure and honor of being able to be at the Relay this year, in spite of the soaking rain, and it was soaking, doggone it. It was truly inspiring, and seeing that many folks out there. Every year, I'm always overwhelmed and awed by the number of folks that come out, and my kids were at an age where they really kind of sunk their teeth into it. So, you know, it's tragic that it's necessary to have these type of events, but what this organization does and what these events do is really bring people together and bring people's awareness in a way that, you know, in the absence of them, we would just depend on, you know, television commercials and other things to thrust these messages in front of us. But this is a much gentler and much more community-based way of having that positive message put forth. So I compliment you and all the myriad folks that are involved in all the planning throughout the year, starting now. So thank you for everything that you're doing. Congratulations, very huge congratulations on hitting that milestone. That's no small task, and I recognize that those dollars are being used in so many ways that are benefiting those that are suffering from cancer, and patients as well as the families. So kudos to you, and God bless. I'll start over to my left, Ed, if you have any comments.
Again, Joe, thank you for everything you do with the Relay for Life. On a personal note, my niece has a team, but she's from Woburn, so I know what the Relay for Life is all about, and I think it's a great, great event, and a huge success for you guys in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Bend?
Yeah, I guess I'll just echo some of the comments I already made, but thank you for you and your team. This is inspiring just to see. Like Mike said, here we are in August. You're planning next year. I haven't even figured out what I'm doing next weekend. So I have my hats off to you guys for all the volunteer work, all the time. I know you personally put in a ton of time, year-round, you and your team for both organizations, and I just can't thank you guys enough for all that you do, and I look forward to it and wish you success.
Jeff, I trust nothing from a negative context from the town.
No, the date, there's no issue there. I would just point out the additional request to illuminate the town common purple. The only thing that we have historically asked groups that wish to light the common is that they provide for the cost of the illumination, which is approximately $120, so we can deal with that later on.
Yep, I have that. I actually have it in my notes. I forgot to mention that. So, yep, well, we're continuing to do that if the town so allows us.
Indeed. Again, we are taking that up a little bit later in the agenda. I have no expectation, I'm sorry? I don't know. Is there any objection to that? Do you want to just jump on six and seven here while we have Joe in the room in case there's any controversy? Yeah, I have no objection if you guys don't. I didn't want to go off. I didn't want to go too rogue. So if that's all right. Jeff, do you have any objection to that? So the number six agenda item on our agenda is the Board to Consider a Request of Joe Martinello Representing We're One Wilmington to Place Signs on the Town Common for the Festival of Trees. I would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? I see none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. And our number seven agenda item is the Board to Consider the Request of Joseph Martinello Representing Relay for Life. That Wilmington Town Common be illuminated in purple during the month of May.
So moved. Move to grant the request.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? None? All in favor? Unanimous. Great. Thank you. Is that it for motions that we have for Joe?
Yes.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight, Joe. Thanks for all your efforts.
Thank you.
We'll see you around.
Mr. Joe?
Yes, sir.
It's appropriate. I believe that since we took a few things out of order, I believe the only other residents in the room might be here for item number 10. Forgive me if I'm wrong, but would you believe it would be appropriate to take that up if we're going to take other ones up out of order?
Yeah, well, we're in, as long as we've broken precedent, this is an August meeting. We're running a little bit contrary to our typical schedule here, but if that's, I have no objection, Greg. Ed, do you mind doing that?
No, sir.
So we're going to break precedent just a little bit more, since we've already done so, and jump over to item number 10. Jeff, I hope that you can catch up with us there and offer some feedback or background, if you would, on what brings us to this point in this subject.
Yes, so you'll recall that this, the request was made back in the spring, late spring, June thereabouts, for a stop sign at the intersection of King and Garden. There is one stop sign on one of the intersections, which was, it's not clear when that was installed. We don't have any record that the Board ever authorized it, so technically, it may not be enforceable, but it's been there for some period of time. The Police Department and Public Works reviewed the request, and both came back at the time advising that it really doesn't meet the standards for the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. There are certain warrants or criteria, if you will, that are used in establishing where, when signs are appropriate. The request was made to revisit that. I did contact both Departments again, and essentially, they did take another look at it, but indicated their recommendations remain the same, notwithstanding the fact that the Board of Selectmen ultimately can decide to have a sign installed at that location.
Thank you, Jeff. So, yeah, there was, you gentlemen will remember when this came up the first time. It did not pass, and if I, if you guys agree that I summarized this, I hope I'm right. If you think that I'm wrong, please correct me, but my recollection of it was that it did not pass, but it, it did not pass because at the time, we didn't feel like we had the appropriate level of, I guess, recommendation from our department heads in the form of the public safety. So we said, we didn't say, "No, no stop sign." We said, "You know what? Let's have a deeper review of this." There was some criteria in their analysis, in the Deputy Chief's analysis, that discussed a few warrants that had to be achieved in order for a stop sign to be relevant or appropriate. And in his opinion, this intersection didn't achieve those warrants, one of them being that King Street is deemed a dead end and not a through street, et cetera. And so we asked that the Deputy Chief and the Chief review that again. I will recognize that part of the recommendations that came out of that was a speed monitoring sign that I believe is now in place. In fact, I've been slowed down by it on more than one occasion on King Street over the last several weeks. And King Street was repaved fairly recently. So, and if I'm not mistaken, I think there's a new street, a new speed limit sign that has been posted, so you know how fast you're supposed to be going on King Street. Is it, it's not in place?
No, it's not.
Okay. I guess it's the speed limit, or the monitoring thing that I'm thinking of. Nevertheless, so we put it back for review in anticipation of having a follow-up conversation today. Is that relatively close to what you guys remember having? All right. So I guess I really just want to have that discussion. If there's more conversation, have God write ahead, please.
Thank you. Just to kick us off here, I did support this the last time. I know it was defeated, but I'm glad we brought it up here again. I have spoken to several residents in that area. This would be much appreciated by them, and anybody who travels that road. The chairman mentioned that it has just been paved. You can, you can understand that that might increase some speed. It's mop until, it'd be, that was the first I've ever heard of a speed sign on King Street, you know, having grown up down there. I never saw a speed limit sign on King Street. In fact, I don't even know what the speed limit is. I can't find anybody that can tell me. And although I respect the Deputy Chief's opinion, I disagree with it. I don't see the harm here in a sign, with another stop sign. There's one on the other side. The chair just indicated, and I witnessed myself, that there is a speed indicator on King Street right now because of speeding issues. I myself witnessed a police officer doing traffic control in the exact spot that we're talking about just the other day, as I traveled that way. And again, I don't see a reason why, if it's going to help with safety, I recognize that the, and the study shows, there's only been one accident, but in my opinion, one is too many. So I know this sets a precedent. There's plenty of places around town that could use a stop sign or some type of speed, you know, speed is an issue. Wilmington's a cut-through community. People do speed, but this is a small neighborhood. I think it's a reasonable request, and I would urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this.
Thanks, Greg. Ed, any comments or questions?
Well, I certainly understand why there's probably a need for a stop sign, but my biggest fear is the President, we're going to be sitting here, and next meeting, and the meeting after that, and the meeting after that, people want stop signs. And why do we have the DPW and the Deputy Chief or the Chief of Police going out and doing studies on these roads, and then we don't listen to them? That's, that's the fear I have with sitting a President. If, if the Deputy Chief came back and said of the four, the four warrants, there was two of them that passed, I could see that, but he, he gives legitimate reasons why all four of them don't pass. I don't travel on that road every day. I quite honestly can't remember the last time I was on that road, probably this spring. So I struggle with adding a stop sign when the Deputy Chief and the DPW clearly went out there and did a study of some sort and said that there's no real reason for a stop sign. So I am struggling.
All right. I appreciate that. I share that, or I shared, I have shared the same sentiment at, for a while. And I wrestled with it even up until earlier today, really trying to decide how I would justify whatever vote I took. And my thinking was that if I were to vote in favor of the sign, that I would have to be able to, in the future, justify why I think a sign is appropriate in that spot, but not appropriate in the spot where a future resident is asking for a sign on their street. So again, we're going to potentially establish a precedent of going against the recommendations of our department head in order to put a sign in a place that maybe doesn't meet the criteria of warranting a sign. So what other criteria that I have above and beyond those that we've been offered in the recommendation, what criteria can I offer as a voting member of this Board that would help me in the future justify saying no to somebody else? And so that's what I've really kind of been contemplating, is can I say yes to this one and confidently be able to say no in the future, or would I be kind of a hypocrite? I've been kind of wrestling with it. And so that's kind of where I am on this. I don't know. Jeff, you seem like you have some more concern notes there. I don't want to.
Well, I was just going to note a couple of things. This comes from Jamie McGoldy, who was involved in the review. He notes in part, "There is a push from FHWA, which is a Federal Highway Administration, and MDOT, or Mass Department of Transportation, to only install stop signs where absolutely necessary, as overuse has desensitized the motoring public to fully obey them." And then he quotes a particular section from the Mass Amendments to the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. "The purpose of stop sign is to designate right-of-way to vehicles making conflicting movements. It is not intended, nor shall it be used, for the control of speed, traffic calming, or for stalling pedestrian rear-end or turning movement accidents."
Thank you.
Yeah, please.
I could just respond to a couple of comments. I know the manager just mentioned pedestrians. You know, as I mentioned before, I don't live there anymore, but I did grow up at the end of King Street, further down on Coral Street, and I can remember a time when, when my bus stop was at the top of King Street. And I should point out that, you know, you mentioned pedestrians. It made me think of, King Street is a pretty busy road. It doesn't have any sidewalks. So again, you have vehicles entering this pretty, I would, you know, I caution you to use the word busy, but at times it can be. People pick up speed, particularly where there's a hill not too far off. People are entering this road with no sidewalks. There's a lot of children that live in that area, and that just, to me, is a safety concern. And again, you're coming down a hill, entering a busier road. You're probably going to stop anyways. This is to prevent somebody who may not have the intelligence to probably slow down, come to a stop, and look both ways. We can't prevent everybody, you know, we can't expect everyone to be the brightest bulb in this world. We know that. But the other thing, if I could just respond to the comments from my colleagues, is that I totally agree, the precedent is a concern. There's no question about that. But in the year and a half that I've been on the Board and fairly new to this, this is the first time anyone's ever requested something like this. And I feel it's, you know, my obligation as a community leader to respond to the requests of the residents. I would also point out, in the past, we've had road races approved or not approved, block parties approved and not approved. They've been case by case, and I can, you know, I could go on. There's probably other events that have been approved or not approved. And so I don't know if I, the concern of precedent is so pressing in this matter for me, because, you know, if somebody wanted a stop sign in the middle of Route 38 next week- wanted a stop sign in the middle of Route 38 next week, at next meeting, I don't think that the criteria that we're looking at here is going to be the same. I think it's going to be a little bit different. I have full confidence in going from case by case. Again, Mr. Shump, I know you've been on the board a lot, longer than I have. I don't know if the last time someone requested a stop sign, I've been watching the meetings for quite some time. I can't recall one. So, does it create a slippery slope? Maybe, but I doubt, you know, every week we're going to be taking up a stop sign. Just my opinion.
Well, I have, I said a moment ago that I've been wrestling with, would I be able to, in the future, justify my vote against? And I feel prepared, I don't want to give away the farm here, but I feel prepared that if I were to vote in favor of the sign this evening, I could cite that at one point, in fact, it's the number-two warrant, that says that King Street is a dead end and not a through street. And maybe by some formal definition of what a dead end is and not a through street is, at the state level, maybe it is a dead end. But in my estimation, and by my definition, it's not a dead end. It goes to Broad Street and goes left, and there's a whole set of neighborhoods that are all in there, including the newer development. And it goes to Broad and takes a right, and it goes to, obviously, my development. So, it's anything but a dead end. And as more development occurs, there's more traffic. So, that, to me, that warrant in and of itself, again, maybe formally wasn't met, but in my definition, it was met. And so, I'm able to confidently say that I could vote in favor of this sign and use that as my reason. And in the future, if someone comes and asks for a sign, if it doesn't fit the four warrants, then I'd be able to say, "Hey, I'm sorry, it doesn't fit." So, that's my, I guess, my out, if you will, and I'm going to probably hang my hat on that. But Ed, I don't know if you have further comments?
No.
I want to, I'm sorry.
I could just add one more thing. Trust me, I don't want to slow anybody down here to some extent here. This isn't like we're looking for another set of lights. Trust me, I don't want another set of lights in town, just like the next guy. But, you know, this seems like a reasonable request in a, in a small neighborhood with a lot of children, coming onto a busier street from down a hill with no sidewalks. I'd be confident, like you said, I agree with you, that the next time this comes up, it's a case by case. If somebody wants a blinking light or a set of lights, that's a totally different story. But this is a stop sign, and I'm prepared to support it.
You know, it seems like maybe to some folks, they might be looking at us going, "Boy, they're making such a big deal about a sign." It's not so much about that specific sign that's a big deal. I think it's this process.
Yes.
We just want to hit it right.
I appreciate the discussion.
Because I believe that we are somewhat setting a precedent or creating a process that we, or future versions of we, will look back on and use as a benchmark. So, I just want to be real detailed and formal about the process we use. So, again, it's a, it's a stop sign, big deal. Well, the process for it is a big deal.
Agreed.
We do have residents in the room here, and I know this is, Mr. Protopapas, is that right?
Yes.
So, going a little bit out of convention here, normally, it's not really a public hearing, but I want to give you the opportunity to speak on the issue, if you'd like to.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's time. And I certainly appreciate you having the heads of departments looking into this, and their opinions are obviously valuable. And I don't mean to totally go against the whole grain of what they said, but I'm also one who wrote the email about the accidents and drew the picture, and I was one of the first ones on the scene with that poor girl trapped in that car, who, thank goodness, was able to just sit on the driver's seat and was smiling out the window and told the fire that I was able to extricate her. Thank goodness the cow wasn't on fire, and everybody got to walk away from that. At the same time, that same exact corner is also a bus stop, right in front of my house. I live on that corner, opposite of the street, you know, where we're requesting the stop sign. So, I see it all the time, people creeping out. They don't know, strangers from the town. Like you said, you know, common sense isn't always common. People come down, they're not familiar with the area, they just kind of creep along, and then all of a sudden, they realize they're on a road that they shouldn't maybe be, and that, you know, panic a little bit. If there's a stop sign there, that would certainly alleviate that. They'd know they'd have to stop and get their bearings a little bit. And, you know, and where we do have the portable speed indicator is great. Like, I can certainly say that I've witnessed people notice their speed, because it just gets away from them. They don't know how fast they're going. They say, "Oh, I'm doing 40," all of a sudden, and you can see it come right down. You know, our fear is that that's portable and going to be gone someday, you know, that that's not always going to be slowing people down at that intersection. And where there is one right across the way, I just feel it'll be very helpful and very safe. And, you know, we do have a lot of, you know, children walking. I could probably say at least 20 people walk their dog by my house a day, minimal. And that's just people with dogs, not, you know, kids riding their bikes, you know, especially where it's paved. I've noticed a lot of kids on scooters and, you know, enjoying the new pavement. So, I think, I think a stop sign would really benefit the safety of the community, that neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm Rebecca Martinello, and I am across the street at 19 King. And I can tell you that I had met with town manager Hall about this particular scenario. And I was actually first on scene with Charlie. And I'll tell you, it was, it's very scary for us to be the first people on a scene of an accident. And it was very apparent that speed was a problem and was part of the issue here, not just necessarily the stop sign. And I do appreciate everybody taking such a thoughtful manner in this scenario, because it is important that we don't just rush into a decision. So, the stop sign, having that there, you know, the bus stop is definitely a part of it, but also just for the purpose of just slowing people down and just taking a little extra time to stop. The DPW did remove a tree that was blocking that intersection as well, for people's view of down King Street, which I thank them for, because that is a huge difference, and that was done just a few days ago, maybe about a week ago. So, they've been taking a lot of the precautions. The speed limit sign has been instrumental. It's only been out since last Thursday. And I can tell you that I'm outside with my children. I'm a Wilmington High School teacher, and I am, I'm with my kids every day in the summer, home in my front yard, and we put up a fence because of it, you know, the speed. I have three small children, under the age of four. And so, it's one of those things that we need to be aware of. They're not realizing. It's not malicious intent. There's a couple of people that go a little bit quick, but we were seeing people 45, 50. You know, that's, that's really, and I'm not a speedometer, but I can definitely tell that they're up there. I'm noticing, just from the last three days, the average speed is about 24, 25. And as soon as they turn on from Glenn to King, it goes from about 28, 30 miles an hour down, as soon as they see that sign, to about 25, 24, 19 sometimes. And then sometimes they go back up as they hit that hill. But it has slowed down instrumentally just because of that sign. And I, I've seen the difference in the last few days. It could go away. It could be something that people get accustomed to and forget about. But I think, you know, taking those precautions, the stop sign, it's not necessarily a fix for everything, but it's definitely one of those things that can definitely help for the safety of all of the people that are on King and the surrounding streets. People coming from Fay and Dobson, they're coming to that same bus stop. Coming from Crescent and all of these other streets, coming to those bus stops. So, there's a lot of people that are using King Street. And the developments are definitely a portion of the extra traffic. And because there is only one outlet, which is King, for those developments, it definitely will be that addition. So, I really do appreciate everyone's time and effort on this. Thank you.
The only thing I'd add, since I live right around the corner, is the big game changer for Garden Ave, because I've been there my entire life. I grew up on the other side of, I grew up on King Street, now I'm on Garden Ave, which is a corner of Garden and Crescent. So, the game changer has been the asphalt that's been put in. That changed the speed limit on Garden Ave. It used to be a dirt road, a pothole dirt road that you couldn't go fast on. You can go fast now on these asphalt roads that we're putting in that are not the, a standard road. So, when you put in that crushed asphalt, it's easier for the cars to not pick up the speed on those side roads that they weren't able to do back in the day, and this wasn't a concern 15 years ago. There always has been a bus stop for children on that stop. I went to that bus stop as a kid. And the bus stops on both sides of the road. They had to actually move the bus stop to the side of the road that actually has the stop sign, because it's safer. They shouldn't have had to move that. When I was growing up, the bus stop was on the opposite side of the road, because there wasn't a stop sign on both sides. As soon as the stop sign went in, they moved the bus stop to the side of the road with the bus stop sign, because it's safer for the kids. Even on that road, it's still not that safe because of how busy King Street is. Putting the stop sign in Garden isn't going to change the speed on King Street. Putting up speed limits, speed signs on King Street will help do that, but people don't stand in the corner because King Street's so busy. That's how busy it is in the morning. They're in someone's driveway, because it's safer to do that. Who knows if the new people who bought the new house are going to let people sit in their driveway? The people who were there previously did, but will the new people allow them to do that? That, if we put a stop sign on the other side of the road, you'd enable them to move the kids back to the other side of the road to where the stops, where the bus stop used to be. And it is a little bit safer on that side of the road to be standing in the morning to get on the bus. So, there are other mitigating factors involved, too, that I don't know that it's incorporated in the studies as well. And, you know, Charlie mentioned, travel habits have changed. You know how many people use GPS today that don't know the neighborhoods they're driving through? I would argue probably everybody in this room has used GPS at one point in time to get from point A to point B. So, we have more people traveling on roads that aren't familiar with those roads than we've ever had in history, in history in general, because people can use these GPS devices that will navigate somebody to the fastest route. Might not be the best route or safest route, but it is the fastest direct route. And that gets people traveling through neighborhoods that normally they wouldn't be traveling to the fastest.
Thank you, Joe. Any further comments from up here in response to what you've heard, or if not, I guess I would accept a motion to act on this.
I'll move to grant the request.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We are in discussion as we speak.
Is there any?
I hear none. So, we have a motion that's made and seconded. We've had ample discussion. So, I'll take the vote. All in favor of instructing the town manager to place a stop sign at the corner of Garden and King, as requested. Raise your hands now. I'll vote in favor tonight. All opposed. Thank you. Two carries the day for the night. So, thanks for your patience in the process, and thanks for being here tonight to make your case.
But I also, I know you had mentioned enforceable versus non-enforceable. Could the other one then become enforceable and put on record as being enforceable as one?
I presume. I don't know. How does, do I register that, that other sign as being in place?
I think by virtue of it being there. Well, it does require a vote of the board, I think, not to be too bureaucratic about it, but as a practical matter, from a public, from an open meeting law standpoint, I think the best approach would be to bring that to the board's meeting in September, noting that the intention is, or if this is the idea, the intent to consider confirming that the speed, the stop sign on the other side is authorized by the board.
Okay.
So, it's currently there, but you're going to authorize it.
The opposite side, at the intersection, yeah. God, now, there's a stop sign. And if I could, I'm not trying to be smart, Jeff, here, but, so, we don't know how that sign, it didn't grow out of the ground. No, we know that, but the town didn't put it there?
Well, no, I think the town put it there. I think what, speculation, I believe that there was a request made, and it may have been put up without being sanctioned by the board. So, whether it was...
It still serves its purpose. I mean, I would argue that.
Right. Well, the problem is, similar, if you recall, a few years ago, when we were modifying the signs on, around Silver Lake, there were, without them being authorized by the Board of Selectmen, the police department doesn't have the jurisdiction to enforce them. And so, technically, if someone wanted to take it to court, you know, a judge would look for the vote that was actually certified. We wouldn't have it, and they, you know, the penalty would be waived.
So, you're right. I think, Greg, the stop sign works to stop people. But in terms of enforcement and having it hold up in court, if it's not codified and in the, in minutes of a meeting somewhere that it was voted on, it loses its teeth, as it were. I know. It's bureaucratic hoo-ha, but it's the world we live in. So, that said, I think in order to sort of give it teeth, as I think it was requested, could we ask that we take that up in a future meeting?
Yes.
We can't take it up this evening, really, just because it wasn't on the agenda to do so. So, we're going to do it, we're going to do this by the book, because it seems like...
I would only ask that if it doesn't pass, so we, we in jeopardy of it coming down?
I don't plan to tell anybody to take it down unless you want to.
I just don't want to run that risk.
We'll take the don't ask, don't tell.
No, that, I mean, that's, Ms. Martinello asked us to take it up and to give it formality. We don't have to do that. If you want to leave well enough alone, I think we ought to do it. We've gone through the exercise of authorizing the formality of the new sign. We ought to have the formality of the old sign. So, we'll, I think it's worth taking our chances. It's not going to come down. It's just really a matter of whether or not it gets the vote of approval.
You got that on TV, right?
Yes, fine. All right, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you.
I had your two minutes.
Appreciate you taking that out of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that was, it made sense. Thank you for your patience.
So, under Communications, first item on the agenda is a memo to the board with regard to the revised focus Human Health Risk Assessment Operating Unit 3. This is part of the Olin process for evaluation of the various components of the Superfund site. This document was prepared by one of their consultants. It was intended to assess the risk of exposure from NDMA in groundwater within the Operating Unit 3, which includes groundwater under the Olin property itself, groundwater within the Maple Meadow Brook Aquifer, and groundwater south and east of the Olin site. This document initially was provided to EPA back in June, the end of June. The EPA was not satisfied with the results that were provided, sent it back for review and revision. This is the revised version, and the town, as well as Wilmington Environmental Restoration Committee, have until the 16th of the month to offer comment, which we will be doing through our consultant, GeoInsight. And this is part of a larger assessment that will be done, risk assessment, that will involve a number of other chemical constituents. That assessment is expected to be out for review next year.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I know, Mr. Manager, I know that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're going to be talking more Olin in the fall. Is that correct? I know this has kind of been on the back burner for the summer. We're awaiting some correspondence, but we're going to be perhaps hearing a presentation on this in the fall? Is that correct?
Yes. Jim DiLorenzo, who is the project manager at EPA, is scheduled to be here at your meeting on the 11th.
Great. I just know that, I just want the folks at home to know that we continue to be opposed to this. So, I think all the members of the board are opposed to this and want to continue to fight this as best we can. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Next is a correspondence from Valerie Gingrich regarding the MBTA Positive Train Control Equipment. This was, the Conservation Commission was notified by the MBTA that they would be installing equipment at six locations in Wilmington. This technology is intended to prevent collisions, derailments, and other catastrophic events involving the train system. It's required by Congress per the 2008 Rail Safety Improvement Act. Part of the elements of this project include 30-foot antennas and either a 6 by 8 or an 8 by 10-foot equipment housing that would all be contained within the MBTA right-of-way. I would just point out that this is not related to the prior monopole issue, which the MBTA was pursuing. DEP has determined that this project is exempt from the Wetlands Protection Act, so there is no jurisdiction for the town to take any action.
Just a minute. Mr. Chairman, I was glad to hear in the news this past week that the MBTA has abandoned their plan to put monopoles in 351 cities and states. It looks like that they have abandoned that plan, because it was too costly. abandoned that plan because it was too costly. Yeah, I was very glad to see and hear that.
You know, they said it was too, based on the cost version, but I, I suspect it had a lot to do with the outcry. I think we, as a municipality...
And Wilmington would have affected Wilmington greatly.
Yeah, I think a lot of folks are really upset about what it represented.
I did read it, I did read it in a, in a trade magazine that they also asked their group to come up with a, a better, more efficient way to provide Wi-Fi for their passengers. And that's what it was all about.
Put it back to the drawing board a little bit, let them get creative. Very well, thank you.
Next is a correspondence from Valerie Gingrich, Planning Director. Again, this is a follow-up from the June 26th Board of Selectmen's meeting where the board requested information about the housing production projections in 2017 or to date through 2017, June 30, and also housing density in neighboring communities. She notes that through June 30th, there have been sixteen new homes, and then, so when you add that to the existing slate of homes, in, in particular, there were 198 that were added to the roster since the last census in 2010, that brings our total up to 8,002, with seven, 773 affordable units expected to be in place by, or as of 2020, that's the current number we have, and she notes in a footnote that it could perhaps be lower than that depending upon when, when some of these units come offline, so to speak. But if there were no new homes constructed between now and 2020, the town would, town's affordable housing percentage would be at 9.6. So she goes on to point out that we know that there's 90 homes approved and awaiting construction, 100 homes that are in the permitting and planning stage, so clearly we will be below the 10%, even if none of those homes that are proposed for development are constructed. She goes on to point out, she did a survey of neighboring communities in terms of density. She notes that Wilmington provides for multi-family residential in the Central Business District and in the Neighborhood Business District, 10 to 17 units per acre through a special permit in the Central Business District, and 10 units per acre in the special, through a special permit at the Neighborhood Business District. In the survey she did of the local communities, the density ranges from 6.4 units per acre in Billerica up to 43 acres, 43 units per acre in Woburn. So it is quite a range, and most of them seem to coalesce around the 7 to 10 or thereabouts. The expectation is that we will bring this up at a September meeting for the board to consider. Again, I would just note that I'm looking for some direction from the board as to whether it is the board's intention and desire to pursue additional affordable units and potentially look at using town-owned land to offset what we know will be a below 10% number at this point.
Mr. Chair, if I may, since we're going to be talking about this in the fall also, I appreciate Ms. Gingrich putting this information together, but I would request that she get us, only the surrounding towns, I'm not looking to make busy work for, but just the surrounding towns, I believe they're all here, what's their percentage projected to be? I mean, we can't be the only community in the 350-some-odd communities in Massachusetts that's going to face the potential, the possibility of going under 10%. Other communities must be facing this challenge as well. I'd like to see what other communities are doing, specifically the ones that, you know, are close to us, before we rush into anything.
I will tell you right now, we're one of the few towns right now that are at the 10% or above. Few towns that have, that are at the 10% right now. Every community is fighting it. There might be the few that are not, or even, I, I feel this board and the town of Wilmington are being proactive of the future, so we don't get below that 10%. She's proved to us that we are going to be below that in, by 2020, so we need to, we need to act now. We are not the only town dealing with this. Since I was on the Board of Appeals for so many years, I mean, I read all the different magazines. Wilmington, we, we fought and fought and fought and got to the 10%, and I really feel that if we, as a board, decide to give Mr. Jeff Hall the, the go-ahead or the direction to look at some affordable housing for the seniors, that's going to help in a long way. But she'll tell you, and I, I do want that information, but my, my knowledge is that we are one of the, Wilmington is one of the few towns that, that are at 10%.
I can speak just from personal knowledge, having, live in Billerica, that they are having similar discussions and, and it's not, you know, uniformly endorsed, but they're also having some discussions about the sale of town property as a way to promote affordable housing. So we're certainly not unique in that respect, but I will have Valerie take a look at all of our surrounding communities in terms of what their percentage is now, what they're projected to be at in 2020, and, and what kinds of discussions, to the extent we can identify those that are happening in terms of offsetting the 10%. I mean, at the end of the day, it, it's not, it's not a situation where presumably when the census comes out in 2020, we're automatically, you know, going to be in trouble necessarily. It just means it opens the door so that a developer can come in and you can, certainly some of the properties have been referenced in some social media in, in other places, but potentially a developer could come in and decide they want to pursue a development there, and it overrides local zoning. So that, that's just a vulnerability that we create if we're not at 10%.
Yeah, and I appreciate the concern. I share that same concern. I don't think anybody wants to see that happen, but if we're going to be spending residents' tax dollars, I want to make sure we have all the knowledge. Let's not rush into anything. Let's keep in mind that we're, at the same time, we're talking about a facilities master plan on the horizon, we're talking about the possibility of a needing of a North Wilmington Fire Station, we talk about needing senior housing. I mean, let's not rush into something to spend taxpayers' dollars before we have all the facts. So I think that's relevant, that we can find out what the surrounding communities that are comparable to us.
Can I ask, Greg? Pardon my ignorance here, two things. One is, while I certainly welcome the knowledge of what our surrounding, what our neighboring community's situation is, I don't see where that has an impact or a, an effect on our situation. So I'm questioning why that, that information is value, so valuable to you. And B, I, I'm also, I guess, questioning a little bit how, your last statement was, we don't want to rush into spending taxpayer dollars, and I don't, I don't feel like the discussion about directing the town management to pursue a plan for addressing our 10% 40B classification by 2020 is, is somehow equivalent to us suggesting that we should be spending taxpayer dollars. So I just, I'm just asking you to maybe define a little bit detailed of your statements.
I appreciate the chance to elaborate. The first part of your question, I think it's relevant just for the mere fact that if it comes back and it says that one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of these communities that touch Wilmington are all on the same boat, I feel a lot more confident that the developer's not going to come in here and, and say, you know what, how about Wilmington? I'm going to build something there. I find a little more comfort, strength in numbers, if you will. I think that's the reason why. The other thing is, you know, best practices, you know, just my teaching background, we share best practices. I'd like to see us do the same thing with, with communities that are comparable in size and location, obviously, close to us, and see if some, how, if somebody else maybe have addressed this issue. You know, perhaps Burlington, I'm just throwing that out there, has faced this issue and, and they're going to, how did they resolve it? Or did they face the same situation and then it didn't come to fruition? Because, like you mentioned, there were 90-some-odd houses proposed to be built, and there was this project and that project that saved them at the last minute. I appreciate the caution, I know it's three years out, and it's, now's the time to be talking about it. But again, I believe that that would be relevant just when we make our decision. And secondly, I just want, I urge on the side of caution, just because of, you know, anytime we're talking about selling off town-owned land, we only have so much land here in Wilmington, we all know that, and there's not a lot of space left. I'm very cautious when, when we happen to decide on that, and it certainly will be something we have to decide in the future, but, and in terms of building, if we have to go ahead and build something, that's taxpayer dollars as well. So, and, and I say that because we're talking about all these other projects at the same time, whether it's, you know, making adjustments to our schools or town hall, municipal building with the findings from the master plan, which will be presented in the near future. I think all of us at some point have talked about the potential of having, to make a decision about a North Wilmington Fire Station. I think what's going on in North Reading only pushes that discussion even closer to the near future, so I just, I just want to have all the facts here. Hopefully that answers it.
It does, it does. I just, just will continue the conversation if, if you don't mind. The, any development that would come as a result or in preparation for, or in response to 40B would be a private development. So you, you said something that kind of struck me, which was, I, I don't foresee the town being involved in or building any kind of housing development, right? So is that, were you suggesting, were you talking about other developments that you're referring to?
Yeah, no, exactly. I'm just, I, I don't know if, and forgive me if I misspoke, but I don't know if this would entail the town building something. And, and again, also, the, the selling off of town-owned land gives me reason to pause. I'm not opposed to it, I didn't say I'm in favor of it, I just think that, you know, really want to have all the facts before we do something like that, because like I said, we only have so much land left, so...
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, I went to a Mass Municipal Association meeting in, up at Endicott College, geez, I guess it was about three weeks ago, time flies, and the subject was this very subject, it was 40B, and, and all the communities, really, just this region of the Mass Municipal Association's membership was invited. So we, there were members from Lexington and Concord and, I'm trying to remember, Westford, a number of communities that were there and represented there, all of whom are dealing with this in some level, you know, whether they're at 10% or 11 or 6. Everyone is cognizant of, we're, we're coming headlong into a census year, and we need to be watching this and monitoring it. And one community, and I wish I knew who it was, because I would have tried to reconnect with them, but they talked about this, this concept of friendly 40B, and doing what is equivalent to a, a low, a, a housing project that has a component of it, or a portion of it, a percentage of it, that is low-income designated, and by virtue of that, that proportion being low-income designated, the entire quantity of those units was counted towards their 40B. And so that, you know, that got them to their 10%, but they were able to work with the developer to, to allow that developer to, to build that in, in consistent with the, the local zoning, and in exchange, the developer built them a senior center. And I thought, geez, that's a creative way to achieve multiple goals, right? So the, the developer got to develop his, his big compound and probably made a whole bunch of money off of it, and in exchange, sort of donated his services and, and the construction of a municipal facility that, that municipality needed. And it's made me, it struck me for a moment because it really sounded like something that we could benefit from. So I don't know if there's a creative way for us to leverage that kind of negotiation, if, you know, I don't know how that really works.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry if I could just interject there. Certainly, I'm all for looking at ways to think out of the box. I, I think it would be interesting to identify what community that would be, because I, I suspect that, well, it would be interesting to know whether the community made arrangements to convey town property there. I mean, the developer has a cost of land, is one of the most significant costs of the whole project, and certainly land in eastern Massachusetts right now is incredibly expensive. So for a developer to purchase a piece of property that's going to be of the scale that they're able to develop multiple units, it's going to be a very costly proposition. And so that's one of the, one of the valuable tools, I guess, that, that we have, and I'm certainly, I, I agree with Selectman Bendel that land is finite, you know, there are very few opportunities going forward to acquire more land, so you want, we want to be sensitive not to release property unless it's necessary. You know, I guess the question becomes, is the public purpose or the public goal of providing affordable housing, does it merit at some point looking at that as an option? But we can certainly look to, to determine if we can identify that community and how that played out.
Yeah, I, I may have even taken a note, I don't have, didn't have it in preparation for tonight, but I may know who it is, and if not, I have contacts at MMA that we can reach out to, please.
And I appreciate you bringing up that one example, because I think it supports the point I was trying to make, is that I'm not an expert on 40B, I don't claim to be, but, you know, there's one example that you cited, you, you know, you went out of your way, and I appreciate you attending that meeting to try to be proactive. And that's just one example that you saw at a meeting. I mean, so there's got to be more examples that can spark some ideas and steer us in the right direction when we're faced with this idea. And one last thing I want to just clarify is that I want to be mindful of the fact that when we're talking about town-owned land, some of the town-owned land that we have currently was purchased by taxpayers, you know, in recent years. Case in point is the St. Dorothy's Basil that taxpayers paid for. So when I talk about taxpayers' dollars, those are some of the things that I'm mindful of.
Yes, sir.
I, I draw on my experience of the many years on the Board of Appeals. I was on the board for all the 40Bs with the exception of Alvin and Oaks that, that was preceding me. Regency Place, the Board of Appeals denied that, and they got what they wanted over there. Metro's, Metro is the one that put us over the 10% because somehow the rules and regulations changed where if 20% of it was going to be affordable on rental units, they're all counted towards you 10%. So rental property is what put this town over, I'm surmising. So we do have to be creative and somehow, some way to benefit every taxpayer in town, and I am not for giving up land anywhere unless it was beneficial to everyone in town. When I talk about potentially giving the manager direction, it's towards senior housing, which might involve, in the future, not today, not tomorrow, not next year, maybe the year after, the year after that, some type of senior housing. But I, I talk about senior housing because it is a need, but just yesterday at my house, my niece moved back from Baltimore, she's been out of school for a couple of years, she's looking at a house in another state because, not far from her work in Bedford, because she can't afford it anywhere around here. And that's sad, that's really sad. So we have to be creative when it comes to everyone in town about using town property.
And if I could just add to that, I agree, you know, but there's other things that are out of our control, like what we're seeing in North Reading, right? They're proposing up to 500 units right on the Wilmington line, and that propose, that poses a potential strain or increased strain on our fire department. And I don't see the Planning Director coming rushing out to tell us that we got to be proactive about a North Wilmington Fire Station. And I'm just trying to be mindful, and I don't want to open up another can of worms here.
That's my notes for later, I do want to talk about that later.
So I apologize if I dragged this out a little bit too much, but...
It's all, it's very important. And we have to stay on top of it and be proactive, like I think we are.
While being mindful of all the other things that are going on.
Exactly, exactly. The data that Valerie provided to us was provided for a couple of reasons. One, I think, Greg, at one of our previous meetings where Valerie presented to us, she had used a, an estimate as to what she believed would be our number for 2017, and we had said, listen, let's look at, let's get some real numbers. And so that was really, I think, the impetus behind why we got this document from Valerie. Additionally, I, I believe it's, it's really important information for all of us to study and have a really good, strong understanding of, even if it means setting a time to speak directly with her on the phone or meet with her or whatever. And I would suggest if either of you two or the other members of this board wish to do so, perhaps work with Jeff and set something like that up, because having a clear understanding of this process will then give us the ability to give a clear set of instructions to the town management. What I, the worst thing I can think of is this board providing instruction or providing direction to the town management based on a, a wrong understanding of the... a wrong understanding of the, of the facts. So let's get all the information. And then we might have differences of opinions, but at least it's based on real information. So that's great. And I, you know, we'll communicate with the other two gentlemen offline and make sure that they understand that that's the point of this as well. Thank you. We'll continue on with communications then, Jeff.
Yes. Next under communications is a notice that will be going out with water bills regarding residential electronics recycling. Public Works has indicated periodically they get calls from residents who are frustrated that their computers, whether they're the servers, or desktop printers, fax machines, and so on, that they have to put those in the regular trash receptacles. And so DPW was able to identify a vendor that will pick up these materials at no charge. And so we are establishing a collection at the DPW administrative offices at 115 Andover Street, Monday to Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. In the list of items that people can bring to this, to that location are computer towers and bases, servers, cell phones and accessories, desktop printers, fax machines, keyboards and mouse, modem, routers, switches, circuit boards, external, internal disk drives, all cabling, all Mac and Apple equipment, radios, home stereo equipment, VCRs, DVDs, and other media players, MP3 players, cameras and battery backup units. Goes on to note here that CRT monitors slash TVs are not accepted at the drop-off location. And as we've done now for some period of time, those items, you pick up a sticker at the treasurer's office and can schedule a collection.
What's the date on this? I'm sorry. The date's, it's ongoing?
Well, it's, it's ongoing, yeah.
It's ongoing, okay.
Yep.
A new program.
We have correspondence from the Attorney General's Office with respect to a review of the town's articles, zoning articles that were passed at annual town meeting. And specifically, it's noted that the following articles were approved as to form. Articles 42, 45, 46, 47, 48, 54, 55, and 56. We have correspondence from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Nomination papers are due Friday, September 29th at 5:00 p.m. for four municipal seats on the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization. MPO is a decision-making body involved in planning and programming use of federal funds for transportation systems within the MAPC's 101 community district. Wilmington is part of the north suburban subregion.
Since Kevin on my ground here, which one do we want to nominate?
That's how it works, right?
It's happened to me before.
Yeah, no, I won't do that to them.
Next is correspondence from Comcast notifying the board that they will be providing customers with an updated agreement for residential services. And they outlined some of the key points that are changing in that agreement.
We have covered the two board to consider items previously in the meeting, so we'll move to a board to consider agenda item number eight. It is a request by Christine, Christina Stewart, library director, to use the Swain Green on September 23rd, Saturday, from 1 to 5:00 p.m. Jeff, you want to summarize that?
Sorry, I was going to move to grant the request.
Okay, well, don't jump ahead.
Yield to the manager.
We got to hear from the manager.
So this is a request to host a Quidditch game, sports based upon the fictional game of Harry Potter in the novels there. So they're anticipating a good turnout. There'll also be other games, and the board may wish to sponsor a team. So that is the request on September 23rd.
My flying broom is on the fritz, so I'm going to have to take a pass on that. So yeah, it's very exciting. I compliment Ms. Stewart for, and you actually had indicated that she's, she has a knack for finding relevant things and finding ways to continue to keep the library relevant in our community by offering these very creative ways. So my compliments to her. Greg, I think you were going to say something.
Yes, I was going to move to grant the request for the Quidditch game.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any more discussion? I see none. All in favor? It's unanimous? Yes, thank you. I know, yeah, that's fun. The next board to consider item is on behalf of Dana Burnham, president of the Wilmington Farmers Market, on behalf of Bob Beck, to use the municipal parking lot on Sunday, September 10th, and Sundays, October 15th, from 10:00 to 1:00 for an old-fashioned classic car show. Jeff?
There are no conflicts here. As you know, there was a similar request made and granted by the board for the Sons of Italy on August 26th. So the dates of the 10th and 15th are no issue.
And they note that in the event of rain, the event will just simply not be held. So there's no rain dates. Any, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do have a second. Is there discussion? I hear none. All in favor? The request is granted. Thank you. Board to consider the installation of the stop sign at the intersection of Gardinet. I'm sorry, we took that out of order, and we've already passed that, so thank you. I will open up the auditorium here for public comments. Mr. LaPorte, welcome.
Members, I just figured it was a good time or in summer session, and I figured, you know, you'd be busy in the fall. So I wanted to touch up on Mr. Bendel. I can't agree more with him the way he thinks right now, as far as the town and his values of the land and taxes. And that's why I'm here tonight. Taxes are getting to be a big concern in this town. I'm out there every day doing Title V work, and first thing I ask people is why are you moving? Are you moving out of town? If you're moving out of the town, I say why and where. And right now, I did a ton of Title Fives in the last couple of weeks. Taxes is a huge, huge failing for this town. And part of the taxes is getting response in the last couple of weeks saying that, and again, it's just opinion that I hear, saying they don't mind some of the taxes they're going to pay. However, even the school systems are not in the top 100. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but if that is true, I mean, you fellow, you know, board members, and I appreciate Mr. Bendel, because he brought it up a couple of months ago, that he would like to curb the taxes in this town. Being on that board myself, I tried. I didn't get anywhere. You know, I even tried for senior citizen, you know, discounts and whatever, and, you know, tax easements, and I couldn't do it. But I'm here to tell you reality. I have a few questions for the board, then I'm going to give you some food for thought. Actually, if I have a few minutes here, not, you know, not many here. You know, we, we talk about free cash. You know, the last time I heard figures out there, I heard 17-plus growing. I don't know if that's a true statement or not. The first thing I'd like to know, you know, if we are at 17 million in climate, you know, I think it should be fair to the public that you state, you know, what your intent is with that money. You know, we're just building up a fund, and everybody's saying, wow, we're climbing up here and the taxes are growing here. School systems are going here, the cash is going up. Where are we headed? I mean, I think that's a true question that the public should hear. Personally, if we're climbing at 17 million, I have an idea where it's going to go. But the thing is, I know this town is in need of a lot of municipality, so let's not, you know, beat around the bush. We've got the Wildwood Street School in times where you're going to come down on improvements. We've got the substation we're going to need. We're going to need a highway department. The list goes and goes and goes. Okay? And the thing is, can we curb taxes? No, we're not going to make cuts. I mean, when you've got people in place and positions in place, you're not going to cut, especially when the economy's going good. So let's face the facts. You got to have to do creative thinking. I heard that word tonight, creative thinking for, you know, developers in, should I say, you know, the affordable housing. I think we're going to have to be a little more creative, how we're going to curb the taxes in town. Never mind looking at other towns, like when I was up on that board, we always compared my statements outside there. You know, that's fine. But I think the time has come, just as Mr. Loud said tonight. Wilmington's getting to be unaffordable. When you're paying 300,000 plus, and knocking houses over, your children ain't going to stay in town. Which, let's be, let's be honest with each other. The next phase of Wilmington is going to be condos and apartments. That's where we're headed. There's a lot of big parcels out there, and I'm not going to state where, and they'll be coming forward in front of us. Okay? It's not up to me to say, yeah, this is what I think, all as I know is what I know as far as posses. Okay? So let's be a little creative. So my point would be, and it's just food for thought. Okay? First of all, we want to do municipal buildings? Yes. I would support a fire and substation. I heard from the previous board, I believe Mr. Shampoo was there, that at the time, a couple of years ago, it only cost about three and a half to four million dollars to do a substation. But as Mr. Bendel said, don't sell town land off. Okay? We could take the highway department, put the substation there with a subsidy, with a police station like we have on Church Street for future growth in this town. Look at the complex of where we're heading. We're going to 50,000 in time? Let's put, you know, a fire and a substation, police station down there in the highway. Move the highway probably over to the recycling center. You add up the figures, you could take it out of free cash, no money to the taxpayer. I'm sure that DPW, knowing that they're going to get a new building, would probably go and do that site work at your own time, put up, like Bedford did, a Morton Building, which is a metal prefab, and you could probably budget that very, very reasonably. And if you don't buy land, you don't make deals. You have the land, such as the highway department, to put the substation on. You just got building costs. And the same thing, I'm sure if you use your pen, you could probably push some good deals and be tax-free. But that's just, you know, an opinion of mine. But my next opinion is food for thought. You want to be creative? Just what you stated tonight. You're worried about all the growth in houses. Okay? You're worried about apartments. You're worried about the condos. So let's get in on the act. Okay? We already get probably provisions coming that we permit in the, in the next coming year. We got many more coming. So what do I mean by getting the act? Okay? I would say duplexes. Anything duplexes and above. Anything that's, say, commercial property, put in a 10,000-square-foot addition, a 10,000-square-foot new. Condos and apartments. Let's, let's bring in a tax, 2%. 2% of the value of each unit. And even on apartments. And why am I saying apartments? Because in time, you can turn the apartment over to condos. Okay? Take the 2%, put it back into wherever you want it. You want to put it in municipality, DPW funds? I mean, I see your roads in town, three years' time, we're hot-topping, and they're deteriorating because of traffic. And let's, let's be honest with each other. You're not going to curb the traffic in this town. When you've got rezoning, and you've got developing, you're going to add more traffic, more congestion to the town. Lights ain't going to curb the problem. And where are we going to go from there? Then I hear a couple of months ago, on the, on the Butters Road Bridge, that, you know, people were actually asked for sidewalks just on the street, Butters Road. You can't do it. It's over and beyond the time. So we got to look ahead. We're going to have to plan some of these streets, such as Warren Street, possibly Glen Road, going to need sidewalks. You know, Glen Road has sidewalks now, but they're going to, you know, there's a lot more streets. We're going to have diversion of traffic. You're going to be asked to put sidewalks in improvements. So, you know, where are you going to fund it? And to say, well, if you can't afford Wilmington, move out. Is that fair? Is that fair to the people or the generations that work and want to be part of the community? Then all of a sudden, because they didn't invest back when they're, you know, not investment funds that we have today, or the investment funds that we don't have today, because business is trying to curb their costs? So they're not going to give the full ones anymore? They're not going to give the medical? So, you know, I'm asking this board, you know, as a citizen, that I've been here all my life, my generation of family's been here, I'm asking you people, you know, to actually come and start, you know, looking at this and really be proactive. And like I said, that proposal that I have, I throw it out there, you know, many people are all for that, that tax on these units. Because basically, you know, the building boom is coming. It's here. And the town should be in on it. Like Mr. Bendel said, we don't make any more town-owned land. So the more we give up the land for developing, you're turning the character of the town, which you're going to turn it anyways. But you're not going to have the Yentau fields, or this, or the Ball fields, or whatever. Because at the time, the growth is going to outdo the scenery effect of our county. And this is where you guys are heading. And if you, the one brings it in front of you is, you talk a good line. Bottom line is, you got to do, you got to do the talking, you got to do the action. It's over. We're heading that way.
A lot of meat on that bone, Ray. Thank you.
It's been in me for a long time, but I watch, and I watch, and when I'm ready to make a move, you know I'm coming.
I appreciate your sentiments. And, you know, given the years of service that you've donated to the town, and your time and energy that you've put forth, both at this board as well as Board of Appeals, certainly wanted to give you an ample opportunity to have your voice heard. So thank you for, for coming tonight and sharing your thoughts. I have reactions to some of what you said, and I certainly want to make sure that my colleagues have the opportunity to do so as well, including Jeff. So I can hear Greg chomping at the bit. I'm going to, I'm going to go right over to you, Greg.
Thanks very much. Mr. LaPorte, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate those comments. Obviously, you bring a lot of knowledge, both personally and professionally. And having sat at this chair in the past, you also bring that knowledge as well. I appreciate you using the word being creative. I think that's what we need to do. If you'll recall, a few months back, I did ask at a public meeting for the manager to put on the future agenda about spending. You know, I know that, and you know that, you know, all of us, if there was a magic wand up here, and we could wave it, we would lower taxes. I'd love to do that, but I know that's, that we can't do that. So what we can do is try to curb spending and maybe take a, you know, take a good look at how much we're spending going forward in creative ways. So I agree with you there. Again, I don't even like, I've said several times, I don't even like the term free cash. I would prefer taxpayers' cash, because that's what it is.
I don't understand the difference, but unfortunately, you know, the same statements you hear. And I hate to say, you know, I'd like to see it build up or whatever, but unfortunately, you know, you know, if people, if the taxation keeps going, when you've got an older house being compared to a newer house, you're paying $10,000 a year plus on a house that's probably 15, 20 years old, and it's just a three-bedroom. Okay? The bottom line is, it's nice to say, wouldn't you like to get this, because over here sold for this. But when, when the economy crashes, you don't get this. However, your taxes never go down. And if you really look at what we're paying, like I discussed it today with another person brought it up to me, you know, they looked over their history and showed me, over the last few years, they've gone up 40% on their taxes from when they first bought the house. 40%. You know, that's a big tax increase.
Mr. LaPorte, if I may, with respect, sir, I just want to make sure, you know, I want Greg to have the opportunities to articulate all of his thoughts, and then we'll go to Ed. And certainly, I'm going to come back and afford you the opportunity to have the floor again, but just if we could have sort of...
Thank you. And yeah, I guess I'll just conclude with, you know, one of the things I've struggled with in the year and a half I've been on the board is I've had a lot of conversations with the, with the manager, with the previous chair, the current chair, about free cash. And I understand that, you know, part of the reason it's good to have a lot of free cash is our bond rating, and our borrowing rate, and I understand that, but I still grapple with it. You know, it's still taxpayer dollars. I don't like the term free cash. I prefer taxpayers' cash. And I do struggle with it. I do struggle with, you know, why we can't spend on smaller items. I don't like going to town meeting asking for short money from people when we have all that money. I agree. And I struggle with that. And I've been public about that. I've talked to the manager about that. And I look forward to continue to, that discussion. I know there are others that don't see it that way, and I respect that. And, but it's something that I grapple with, and we need to continue. Like I said, I mentioned that I would like to have a, sooner than later, have a meeting item on the agenda about spending, because before you know it, the manager will be putting his next year's budget together, and we'll be voting on it before you know. And tonight, we voted on something for next June. So it's going to happen really fast. And lastly, I totally get it. Just like you, when I grew up here, I worked really hard to make sure I could stay here when I bought my own home here six years ago. And, you know, we live in a very small home, too, and my family's growing, and I'll soon be challenged with the, having to find out maybe a new place to live, and hopefully it'll be here in Wilmington. That's my intent. And, you know, ultimately, I need a one unit in Wildwood Cemetery if I have it my way. So, but I totally understand, and Mr. Loud brought this up many times, that, you know, I feel for the young people that grew up here and want to continue to stay here. The elderly, the seniors that have lived here their whole lives, and they want to stay here. Some are looking at downsides, others, you know, just want to stay in the home they're in. And so I sympathize with them. I know my parents are getting older, and they're in the same situation. So I want to continue to try to fight for them, as I know all the members here do, and I... And I appreciate you bringing these up, and I look forward to continue this discussion.
It's because of you. You know, I see a good part of me in you, you know, when I was up at that seat. You know, I know you're really concerned about the town. I know you're concerned about the taxpayer. And I've always been, you know, a rebel on taxes. So, you know, I have a hard time. I'm in business, you know? But very hard when you're paying all the tax. You're paying personal tax, you're paying this. I struggle. I mean, I'm not gonna lie about it, you know? I'll be open to you people.
Absolutely.
But some of the time, and most of the time, I'm sometimes behind. I mean, it's a hard battle, and it's getting harder. Like I said, you're paying, you know, just for a house, you're paying ten thousand, that's two hundred and fifty dollars a week going to the town of Wilmington. Now, as president, it's only gonna incline. It's not going down. And I'm not saying, well, but everybody's salaries aren't. And with your zoos, you see an average of people move in, probably stay for four years, out and by seven years. They take the equity and the gun. You know? And fortunately, the reason why is because of what we're talking. You know, talking many reasons. So, as we're trying to develop this town, you know, it's good for one sense. But in the other sense, people, direction of, you know, where we're heading, they don't wanna see, you know, a well-developed town as far as congestion, whatever. And it's gonna happen. I mean, I'm not saying it's wrong. But I'm saying one thing is the people with the houses like you stated. You know, we're going up to eight, nine thousand houses now. You know, these roads, Wilmington's only this big. You compare it to Tuxbury. Yeah, we don't have the exits in Tuxbury, but they've got open wilderness as far as, you know, a lot of land in North Reading also. Wilmington's only this big with four exits. But we're still congested. And the bottom line is, our taxes are going up. And, you know, until we really look, how are we gonna solve it? And that's why I'm saying, you know, the only way I can see to really obtain taxes, unfortunately, is to get in on some kind of a tax on the development. You know, right now, the building craze is gonna be for two or three years. Take advantage of it. Because the streets, I mean, I can name them right now. They've only been hot-topped two or three years. They're falling apart. You know, drive your good vehicles down around town. You're bouncing off everything, you know? As fast as, I mean, all the streets are gonna be dug up again. You know, they're gonna put the gas line down.
I'm gonna chime in if I could here, sir. Again, I appreciate you being here and all of the comments. I'm not gonna probably be able to cover every line item of the things that you said. I certainly appreciate your idea, the constructive, you know, idea of some type of creative taxation on development, on duplexes, or something to that effect on rental units. And certainly, you know, I take that upon myself as we'll take it under advisement and explore how or by what manner that could be implemented. So, thank you for that suggestion. With regards to free cash, you know, this, I've wrestled with that stupid terminology for years as well. It's a terminology that's thrust upon us, and it's a common theme across the Commonwealth. It's what communities refer to that account as. Greg mentioned a moment ago that it does buffer our, or boost up our bond rating. It allows, so while it is, yes, indeed, taxpayer money, the presence of that free cash account really serves so many purposes. The presence of that account allows us, allowed us to be able to borrow at a very advantageous rate to be able to build the 21st century high schools that we now enjoy. It puts us in a position to be able to acquire property or things that we would have to pay higher for if we didn't have that free cash account in its strong position, A. B, and Mr. Laporte, you were probably on the board or certainly involved in town government at the time when the economic downturn of 2008 or so happened. And, you know, revenues just weren't there. And so, in order for the town to continue to provide the services that the residents deserve and feel that they've paid for, the town was able to tap into those operational reserves, the free cash account, and not lay off people in Town Hall, not lay off people at the Public Safety Building, continue to provide the services, continue to plow. And yes, we had to deplete some of that account, but the account was there, and it was there specifically for that reason. That's two specific things that jumped to my mind as to what is that free cash account for? The reality is, we're a hundred and something million dollar annual budget, and a portion of our operating budget needs to be put aside for rainy days. God forbid, we have a rainy day coming. We are enjoying a fairly bullish economy right now, and that's wonderful. But we all know that the bear is coming again. And so, just like in your home, hopefully, you're putting some money aside out of each check, and you have a checking account to weather the storm when the storm comes. The town must and is doing exactly that thing. So, I know seventeen million sounds like an obscene amount of money, but in certain circumstances, God forbid, we'll be very glad that it's there. Taxation. Boy, I don't, we could have a whole two hours on taxation. I certainly concur. Listen, I bought my house almost twenty years ago, twenty years ago, and was able to afford it at the time because Wilmington had, you know, had affordable real estate. Since that time, my property has doubled probably more than that in value. I enjoy that. Because you said the word "equity." I now enjoy a tremendous amount of equity in a property that I purchased twenty years ago. That equity serves me in my future in terms of retirement or however I choose to use that profit, if you will, the equity in my home. That's a good thing. That speaks directly to Wilmington as a very desirable place to live. People want to come here. People want to live here. And because of that, the property supply and demand, that's what has driven the costs of our properties up. And I hear people saying, oh, well, you know, it's too expensive to live here. Well, it's expensive to live here because we're such a darn good community. What it speaks to is, well, that A, that translates to a higher tax bill, not necessarily a higher tax rate, but because your property is worth more, you end up paying more taxes. So, you know, fourteen percent of a larger number is a larger number. So, you know, people get a larger tax bill in the mail, and they go, oh, my taxes went up. Well, so did your property value. So, congratulations. I think we should be enjoying our higher property values. That said, it does put people, younger folks who wanna buy into our community, and older folks who want to stay in our community but not pay, or not live in a large house and not pay those high taxes, it does put those people in a really challenged position. And I respect that. I acknowledge it. And that really speaks to why I think it's important for us as a community to strategically and mindfully and carefully look at expanding and diversifying our housing stock, which we've started to do. We've seen some apartment complexes and some multifamily complexes go in. So many folks lament, oh, we don't want multifamily complexes in town. But it's these type of developments, if they're done tastefully and in the fabric of our community, that affords younger folks and older folks a place to stay or come to Wilmington or stay in Wilmington in an affordable manner. And so, you know, I think there's a lot of discussion on this, and the planning folks are much more adept at having these conversations and being strategic about it. But for me, from, you know, a thirty thousand-foot view, that's kinda where I come down on some of these subjects. I'm just one person. So, I wonder if people in the community share my observation or not. But Ed, I wanna make sure you have an opportunity to speak.
Ray, thank you for being here. And I really appreciate your knowledge of the town. And I do know that you are out there every day. My taxes have doubled in the twenty-eight years I've been in town. I am a taxpayer, so it's my number-one concern here. And yes, we do have to get creative to help everyone stay in town. And I stated earlier, I want my son and my daughters to stay in town. It's one of, and my in-laws to stay in town. I was fortunate enough ten years ago to add on to my house so my in-laws could stay in town. 'Cause they were looking elsewhere, and then we came up with that idea to add on to the house. Now, my kids are getting in college and out of college and living at home, and he's trying like heck to save. It's one of the reasons why I go to town meeting and voted for the over fifty-five development on Andover Street two years ago. And then the one on Main Street, which is gonna be condos. It's the reason why I voted for them. So, when those are built, I'm gonna work my butt off for my son to be able to afford, hopefully, one of those condos. And like the chairman said, and it's gonna be done tastefully 'cause that's what the Planning Board and the Conservation and the Board of Appeals demand from these developers. You know that, Ray. So, I do appreciate you being here and letting everyone know that I'm pretty confident that this board is gonna do its best to get creative to support what you're saying. I do like the idea of possibly taxing future developers. It's a great idea. I'm going to Houston tomorrow morning, and my hotel bill has nine different taxes on it. I just looked at it. And it's funny, and you see the commercials for this tax and that tax and the babysitting fee. Those are real. And yeah, you are seeing houses, and the chairman just mentioned it. We all enjoy our houses appreciating. 'Cause Wilmington is a desirable town to live in. And the chairman spoke on a little bit. Yeah, the taxes are going up, but think about the services that this town is getting. And you were part of that, Ray. No one in town pays for sports. We have a beautiful park in the middle of the town at Yentown Park that is just getting rave reviews from everybody in town. We've got a beautiful new high school. About ten, twelve years ago, we built a middle school. So, we have some great things that us taxpayers don't mind paying for from time to time. And yeah, we have to look at the future. And we do have a master facility plan that's coming out. And that facility plan has some suggestions that this board may or may not like. But in reality, it has, something has to get done. And that's in the future. And I'm really impressed with being on the board for four or five months now and of seeing how proactive town management is and this board is on everything. One of my first meetings, Mr. Woods was here about the cemetery and what they have to do for the future. To me, that's being proactive. And I appreciate everything you spoke about tonight. And believe me, it's on my mind. It's on, you heard Mr. Bendel and you heard Mr. Shampoo. And I know the two gentlemen are missing here. It's on their mind too. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. But it is something that we have to do. And I'm with Mr. Bendel about having a future meeting about spending 'cause we do have to look at it. Thanks, Ray. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your time.
I'm gonna offer the opportunity, Greg, if it's okay, just because I wanna try to stay consistent here. Jeff, do you wanna do have comments at this time?
Yeah, I'd like to offer a few comments. One of the things, and there's no question that the taxes have gone up and consistently gone up for the last many years. I think it's worth, though, pointing out that everything is relative. I mean, you look at the surrounding towns, North Reading, Redding, Tuxbury, Middleton, Wakefield, Billerica, Andover, North Andover. All of these communities are expensive. And all of these communities have had significant increases in their taxes over the years. I mean, you know, and that's in large part because Eastern Mass is a desirable place to live. Your access to Boston, access to the highways. You know, where I'm from, out in Western Mass, the taxes are cheap, but nobody wants to live out there. You know, so I think there needs to be an understanding that Wilmington is not unique here, that all of the communities in this area are grappling with the same issues. The free cash, and you know, it's kind of a badge and a curse, I guess, because I think any community strives to be able to put money aside and have it available for the rainy day event like Selectman Shampoo talked about. And believe me, it will rain again. We went from over nine million dollars in free cash in 2003 or '04 down to three million dollars. So, six million dollars was taken out of that fund to keep services, to avoid fees, to keep people employed, to keep them offering services. That, it's not a question of if, it's a question of when that next downturn is gonna happen. Do we have a significant free cash balance? I think it is, there's no question it's healthy. The amount going into Town Meeting was a little over, I think it was eighteen million. We took three point five or thereabouts, maybe even more. I don't have the number off the top of my head. But we put it into various savings accounts. The fact of the matter is, and I think sometimes we're all, none of us are immune to this. You talk about liabilities, and you kinda glaze over because there's something that some generation down the road is gonna pay for. But the fact of the matter is, we have significant liabilities. Our pension liability for the people that are working for the town, that have worked for the town, that are entitled to a benefit upon retirement. We have a seventy-eight million dollar pension liability. And that statutorily has to be paid off by, let's say, the 2034 or 2035. And we've been making steps to do that. And certainly, the last couple of years, I've been recommending, and Town Meeting has been good enough to allow us to pay down that liability in a more aggressive manner. That's a sizable amount of money, and we need to have an ability to offset that. Our OPEB liability, the cost of our health insurance, the last actuarial study we had indicated our OPEB liability was a hundred and nineteen million. We have to have another actuarial study this year, and my expectation is that that number will grow. When we, so that is another liability that the town has to have money set aside for to pay off. Now, we can say, well, we'll ignore it. And perhaps somebody, some Board of Selectmen down the line or some town manager's gonna have to deal with that. But I don't believe that's a responsible thing to do. The town's facilities, the Town Hall, the schools, the library, the senior center, we know, and not to mention roads and infrastructure, we can categorize that we have at least thirty million dollars' worth of liabilities in terms of addressing those issues. And my expectation is, when we get the final report on the facilities plan, that that number is gonna grow. Again, we could avoid having to deal with that. And, you know, hopefully, somebody down the line has some wizardry, and they can address that. But I don't think that's the responsible thing to do. So, from my perspective, having a, what I refer to as available fund or free cash balance is appropriate. With regard to the substation was talked about. You know, the substation in this, been a lot of discussion about the need for a substation. And it's not clear what that cost is. I suspect it's gonna be more than three or four million dollars. But that's really the tip of the iceberg. The real cost comes when you have to hire those ten to twelve officers to man that twenty-four, seven. So, you're increasing the size of the fire department by twenty, twenty-five percent. That's a significant cost to the town, and that's an ongoing cost. And that's an increase in our pension, increase in our pension liability. So, you know, there's, you know, it's kind of a, the challenge here is it's a desire for more services, a desire for, you know, an increase in fire service. We've had an increase in call volume with our police department. Could a case be made to add police personnel to deal with the substance abuse and the mental health issues? Absolutely. The cost, there's a cost for that. There's a cost for hiring additional personnel. So, you know, there's no question that we need to be mindful of how we spend our money. And we try to be attentive to that. And we will continue to pursue that and look at ways we can achieve some cost savings. But, you know, the quixotic element here is there's a desire to reduce taxes but increase services. And it's very difficult to do that. I would just, kind of as an aside, I'm surprised to hear that we're constructing roads that are deteriorating after three years. I'd be interested in, perhaps offline, we can talk about what roads those are. Because quite honestly, I think the DPW has done a very good job of increase, of putting, you know, paving roads, reconstructing roads. And I'm not aware of roads that are falling apart in three years.
Greg, you had more?
All those things, they're deteriorating because of the use. In other words, you've got so many cars a day going over roads. Okay, compaction settles in. Let's face it, okay? You're on a perfect example going to Route 28 in North Reading. Just see the dip in the line. So, it's probably eight inches on each side of the line. You gotta, that's what compaction does, okay? Okay? And then after you get compaction, obviously, the, the pavement starts to crack, and you get frostings, all right? Bottom line is, what I'm saying is by, the more congestion of vehicles, the more trailer trucks, the more, uh, you know, construction equipment, everything that's traveling these roads, okay, has to take a beating on the toll of, 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 of the pavement. And you got heat, you got cold. It's not like in the south, you put down cement highways, okay? They can take anything. Okay, we, you're putting hot talk down. I mean, look at one twenty-eight. Every third year, we're, we're paving one twenty-eight, you know? And we're paving ninety-three. Well, why? I mean, because of deterioration, use. That's all I'm saying. Um, as far as tonight, I appreciate the board, I, I appreciate everything you said, because I'm gonna be honest with you, I didn't come in here looking. I got more probably information to the public tonight than I've seen the last three months directly on a topic. I mean, now, they, they understand free cash. It's, it's out there, okay? The taxes, they know where Mr. Bendel's coming, they know where Mr. Shampoo's coming, they know where Ms. Loud's coming. Um, they know where the town manager stands. Um, again, they know about the substation. We're, we're getting more clarity right now. And I'm not here, like I said, on my own free will. I'm here i- as a public citizen coming in here and bringing the information to you and say, listen, guys, this, this is what you gotta deal with. And, and, and fortunately, you can't keep overhauling it and talking about things and talking about things, cause you know something? Eventually, your seat will be up, your seat will be up, your seat will be up. And you know the reason why? Because people are gonna say, guess what? We're sick of hearing the lines that we're hearing about it, just like the substation. How many times did you say "substation" tonight? But again, why are we here tonight? We don't know how we're gonna employ it. So, again, how do you make cuts and we can't staff the substation? You see what I'm saying? That's all I'm saying. I appreciate you people. Um, and again, don't take it the wrong way than I'm taking it. I'm just bringing information from the outside into you people and say, this is where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Board. Greg, you had something else?
Uh, sorry, I, it's two things. This is so important, and I have, we haven't met in a month, so I'm all fired up here, okay? So, forgive me, but two things that just, just really wanna point out here, is the big picture. Like you said, we're hearing it every day from people, folks too. You know, you sat up here, people call you, people email you, they stop you at the grocery store, we hear it every day. You know, I appreciate your perspective. We're volunteers, you know, we're not, we're paying the same taxes, we're not getting paid, you know that, so I appreciate the perspective you brought here tonight. Uh, two things, you know, we talked about the facilities master plan, that Cecil Group. I was disappointed to hear that they didn't think we needed a subfire station. I don't know if that's so true, you know, we, we spent a lot of money for them to do a lot of findings, that didn't come up, that was disappointing, I've mentioned that at a prior meeting. And lastly, one example, uh, that I want folks to make sure that they're aware of, we are trying, uh, like I said, I'm calling for it to be on the agenda in the future about spending, but one example that I can cite that this board did work on together is that back in May, I called for a meeting, uh, with board members, if they so wish to attend, and all the department heads, and Mr. Hall was nice enough to bring all the department heads in, and the discussion was about that the beautiful Yantel Park was almost around, in the ballpark of five hundred thousand dollars over. The plan was just to, uh, excuse me, under budget, five hundred thousand dollars under budget. The plan was just to dump that back into taxpayers' cash. I said, we ought to bring the people who are knowledgeable about, uh, the town, the department heads, together and see if there's something that we can use that money for, that the people appropriated at town meeting, uh, years ago. Instead of saying, hey, next April, we've gotta go to the taxpayers at the town meeting and say, uh, the DPW needs this type of rake to treat the new turf field. I wanted to make sure that we spent that money correctly now while we have it, and not go back to the taxpayers and not dump that back into free cash. And to the manager's credit, he did, uh, uh, we did have that meeting, there were a bunch of items that were decided upon that the town, the DPW, the Public Works, uh, you know, safety, uh, that we could use, so that money didn't go back there. But I bring that up because that is an example of what we're trying to do, be creative to make sure that, you know, if something comes under budget, we don't just throw it back into free cash. I had a problem with that, I've mentioned it at several meetings. Um, like I said, I give my, my colleagues credit, we all got together. There's a lot of people I mentioned that night that are much smarter than me. Uh, and you know, but just getting everybody in the room on that night and saying, hey, what can we do with this money before we dump it back and increase free cash? I know that wasn't popular with some folks, but you know what? It was just an example of one way we can try to tighten our belts.
You did a good job, uh, Yantel Park, you know, Mr. Loud, you know?
Well, I can't take any credit for that, though, for sure.
And, uh, I, I tell you, it's, uh, you know, I go by there every night, and, uh, I'll be going by shortly when I leave here. I gotta go back up to garage, and, uh, let me tell you, I, I love seeing kids using the basketball courts and everything. Instead of hanging around on the street, getting into trouble, I just love seeing the cars, even the teenagers parked alongside Cross Street. The lights are on, they're in there playing. I, I don't see anything getting, you know, spray paint or whatever. I, I really, you know, I, I, growing up and watching, you know, good friends get into trouble with drugs and whatever, I think it's great alternative what we did there, great for the community and the kids.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray, for everything. Appreciate, appreciate the conversation.
I hope you don't take it the wrong way.
No, this is, this, that's local civics, I'm glad you're here. You're all set? Ed, you, okay, very good. Um, so we'll close off public comments. Uh, we did have new business, uh, that came up, um, an item not reasonably anticipated by me, uh, forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Um, I'll ask Jeff to summarize the, uh, the agreements that he wants to talk to us about about Four Poplar.
Uh, yes, the, uh, there's been some discussions that have been, uh, ongoing between, uh, Valerie Gingrich, uh, the planning director, uh, Shelley Newhouse, the health director, uh, Al Spalding, uh, and a potential buyer for Four Poplar Street. Uh, Four Poplar is currently owned by Mark Nelson. This is a property off of Burlington Ave, and, uh, some of you who have, uh, some history will, uh, recall perhaps that, uh, this has been, uh, this, this property has been a bit of a challenge for the town for quite some time. Uh, it currently does not have a certificate of occupancy, and that has, uh, created some challenges in terms of, both in the town's perspective of trying to bring it into compliance, as well as uh, the owner in terms of, uh, trying to sell the property. Uh, there's a prospective buyer that is, uh, interested, uh, in the property, uh, and, uh, the premise is that an agreement, uh, could be signed, uh, between the town and the potential purchaser uh, that would establish, uh, an escrow account that the, uh, buyer would put funds into, thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars would be the amount, which is the uh, cost that is estimated to cure, uh, the outstanding issues, if you will. Uh, and in addition, the, uh, uh, the certificate of occupancy would be, uh, placed in escrow, uh, with the expectation that, uh, if the closing goes through, and there is still some question as to whether the closing will actually be consummated, uh, but if the closing goes through, uh, the uh, certificate of occupancy would be, uh, provided to the new owner. In exchange, uh, the new owner uh, would be responsible for, uh, addressing the issues, uh, to bring the home in, into compliance and provide, uh, that, that's required for the, uh, certificate of occupancy, namely, uh, completing some roadwork on Poplar, uh, and some drainage. Uh, also, uh, would include, uh, uh, filing an application with the Board of Health, uh, with regard to the septic, uh, system, uh, obtaining a building permit, uh, uh, for the garage to comply with building code and zoning, uh, and essentially modify the existing garage so that it's not a living uh, space as it currently is. Uh, and then providing as-built plans to reflect the, uh, main house on the property. So, all of these things would have to be done by the, uh, new, uh, property owner within a hundred and twenty days. And in the absence of that, uh, the town would be able to draw upon the, those escrowed funds to, uh, address those issues. Uh, so, the, this, uh, arrangement has been worked through with, uh, town council, uh, and the, uh, recommendation is that the, uh, that this needs to be, uh, approved by the Board of Selectmen, or that the Board of Selectmen, designate me to, uh, sign the agreement. And my recommendation this evening is that the board, uh, uh, designate me to sign on behalf of the board, in part because the specific terms, while the principles, as I outlined, are firm, uh, the particular language is still in flux. And the timing of this is such that, uh, it would not, it could not wait until, uh, the meeting of September eleventh. Uh, so again, the recommendation that I'm bringing to the board this evening is that you authorize me on, on your behalf to sign uh, the agreement between the town and this prospective buyer. Uh, there is a, uh, the, the language has been developed by council.
Thank you. Um, offer any question or opportunity for questions? Ed?
Mr. Chairman, Jeff, um, are there any outstanding, um, lawsuits or other issues with the current owner of the property? Cause I know that he is
Yes.
pursued a lot of lawsuits to the town, particularly to Poplar Street.
Uh, yes, I believe, uh, there is at least one particular, uh,
Would that go away?
I, not necessarily, but, you know, the expectation is that we would, uh, ideally be able to, uh, avoid future, um, issues.
Uh, that's the only question I had, Mr. Chairman. I would love to see that somehow negotiated where that lawsuit would go away, but if it can't, it can't, and to sell the property and get all these issues fixed is a good idea.
Yeah, I think, so the, the negotiations are really taking place, uh, with the buyer, a potential buyer, in terms of what needs to be done to address the, uh, certificate of occupancy. Um, I, I think it would, i- if this can ultimately play out, uh, and the buyer, uh, does come forward, I think it will, uh, make a significant, uh, make significant inroads in terms of, um, addressing some of the longstanding problems that we have had.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, it was a similar question that I had. You know, it's just, uh, at the end of the day, if we can resolve the, the restrictions or the, the areas where this, uh, facility, this building is not occupiable, and make it, uh, certify it for occupa- occupation by the new owner, really, uh, uh, the historical challenges hopefully go away. Once and for all, it would be nice to have that property be, uh, an authorized property. Greg?
Yeah, I agree. Just forgive me if I'm missing this here, but I just wanna be clear. So, who's paying for these things to be up, updated here, like the compliance with the Title V? Is it the, the resident or the town?
That would be the responsibility of the prospective buyer. So, if this all comes into play, they're responsible. They're gonna, they have to put thirty-eight five in escrow as, as kind of the, uh, safety net, if you will. And they're then responsible for taking care of these issues if, for whatever reason, they don't take care of those issues within the uh, one hundred and twenty days, then we draw from that thirty-eight five to do the work.
And so, this isn't gonna cost the town any money?
No.
So, this is, and again, Mr. Loud brings up a great point, that this could potentially end any ongoing litigation and save the town some money, potentially.
Well, it, it certainly will end this chapter, uh, yes.
So, I, yeah, I view this as a positive for the town, and if someone wants to sell their home, they should be allowed to do that too.
Does the new owner, upon, if they do the, uh, the project, the work that needs to be done inside the one hundred and twenty days, and it gets certified by, I imagine we have an inspection, um, the new owner gets that escrow account back after it's been certified?
Yes.
That's how that works?
As long as this doesn't ca- cost the town anything, I'm fine with it. I'll make, and that being said, I'll make a motion that we, um, give the town manager, um, the authorization to sign, put, enter into an agreement with related to Four Poplar Street.
Motion's made.
Second.
And second, more discussion? None? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Chairman, is, is this the time when we can come up with, will we, other id- other ideas, or?
Uh, yeah.
Those are the comments?
No, that would be, uh, normally, we don't typically have a new business item like the one we just had, so we usually just go down the line, so sounds like you're ready to roll, so I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Um, first of all, uh, it's been a month since we last, uh, were here. Um, in last meeting, I mentioned that I was gonna mention, um, at every meeting, someone that is currently deployed that's a town resident, his name is Nolan Jarrow, he's a Marine, he's stationed out in Twenty-Nine Palms, which is out in California, and his mom is Mary. I just wanna wish Nolan the best, and his mom and his family, uh, the best, and, uh, thank you for your service. Secondly, um, a couple of days ago, I went to the library, had a summer bash at, um, on the Common, uh, not on the Common, but on the, uh, Swain Street, and, uh, a lot of young families out there, it was very encouraging, a lot of fun. I don't have a young family anymore, unfortunately, my kids are grown up. Uh, but I went over there to get some great barbecue food, and it's pretty amazing, we mentioned it earlier, how Mrs. Stewart and her staff, um, come up with ways to, um, keep the library, um, going, and I, I noticed on social media that they were glad to hear that they got ten new Friends of Library, and they raised eight hundred and something dollars for, uh, Friends of Library, cause they had a raffle. To me, that's what this town is about, um, and it was a lot of fun. The other, um, event that I attended was, um, the Wilmington Police Department's Night Out, National Night Out, that was, um, phenomenal. It was incredible. They were able to get a lot of donations, WOW was one of them, um, drawing a brain, brain fart, who was the food provider?
Red Heat.
Red Heat was, uh, phenomenal food. It was just great. The helicopter was the, the, the hit of the night, even for me personally, so congratulations to the, uh, the Police Department. Um, that is, uh, that was a great night, and I know there's more events coming up that I'll be at, and everyone in town should consider going, cause it's, it's a lot of fun, and, um, those were some of the events I did, and I did have one question for the town manager, if he could. It's been mentioned tonight about the North Reading, four hundred and fifty apartments coming right on the Wilmington Town Line. Um, I'd like to find out how many police, police or fire calls we've had at the existing complex there now, if there's any way we could get that. Um, and being creative is the word. How can we get this new development to pitch in for a new fire truck for our North Wilmington Fire Station? I mean, if we, if we're gonna have a, a spot at the table here, we should, should shoot, we, we should think outside the box. Cause if, if our fire department, if this four hundred and fifty apartments or elderly departments get built, our fire department's gonna be taxed, and it's gonna be used a lot. Um, there's one over fifty-five development, um, development across the street from my street in North Wilmington, and then in the last month, there've been three ambulances called to that one alone. Never mind four hundred, and it's only got forty-eight apartments, never mind four hundred and fifty, which is right over the border. So, I really feel strong that we should look into something that this town should be able to benefit, um, in some way from that being built.
If I could, uh, just, uh, ask, uh, Mr. Loud, what, what period of time are you looking for this information?
Since the, since those apartments have been built.
Okay.
How many times have we been called there? Um, and it hasn't been long, uh, Jeff. That's all I really, I'm looking for, is something, something to, to bite our teeth into that we can say, hey, to the town of North Reading, you're looking at these, and you're looking at what's, what's it, Candlewood or something Wood Estates?
Oh, the, yeah, Edgewood?
Edgewood, yeah, Edgewood, they're right over across on sixty-two. How, how many times have the, uh, police and fire been called there since they've been around? And they've been there less than five or eight years, I believe. That, if we could have that, uh, hopefully by our next meeting, that'd be great. That's all I had.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Um, Greg?
Thank you, Ed. Appreciate that. Great addition to the meetings, uh, shouting out our veterans, so, uh, to Nolan Jarrow, thank you for your service, and all those who are serving Wilmington and our country. Uh, just to go down the line quickly, but it's been a month, so forgive me. Uh, I also attended National Night Out, one of the great nights, beautiful night, Black Hawk, definitely the highlight of the night. Whoever thought it was a good idea to bring their five-month-old to see a Black Hawk, uh, she, she didn't enjoy it as much as I did, but, uh, someday she'll appreciate it. But to the Police Department, the Fire Department, DPW, and all the volunteers to make that night awesome. I mean, free food, free ice cream, just a great community event, well-attended, awesome. And so, uh, thank you to those. Uh, it pains me to say this, but, uh, this'll be the last time we meet before school was back in session, so I wanna wish everybody a, a well on their, uh, start of the new school year. I wanna remind folks that the kids will be out there, so please, uh, be cautious of them on the streets at the, in the mornings, um, at the bus stops, and, uh, and, uh, appreciate everybody, uh, driving slow around the kids and, uh, and yielding to the school buses. So, I wish all the kids a, a great start to the year. As a school teacher myself, uh, the best thing about the first day of school is that there's only a hundred and seventy-nine days after that, so, uh, good luck to everybody in the start of school and all the fall sports teams that are starting this week as well. Uh, just a quick update for the town on the substance abuse position. It has been filled. I believe the start date is next Monday, August twenty-first, is that correct?
Yes.
So, uh, that has been a long time coming and a lot of work by a lot of folks, uh, so we're looking forward to that, and I believe if, uh, that'll be before our next meeting, so if somebody is in, uh, need, they can contact the Police Department's, uh, next Monday to get ahold of that person.
Yes.
That would be great, and so, uh, that's really gonna be a huge, uh, help for the town and those who are struggling. Uh, speaking of that, there is a five-k road race, uh, for, uh, Tim Brady Five-K on Sunday, August twenty-seventh, that the board, the board approved at their last meeting. So if folks want to attend that, that's for a great cause. And lastly, again, I look forward to a future agenda item where we can talk more about spending. I know we've talked a lot about it tonight, under what was public comments and new business. I'd like to see it on the agenda, when our, the entire membership is here, and we can continue to talk about ways to tighten our belt in this community with so much going on, from the possibility of a new fire station need, the findings from the facilities master plan, our schools, our roadways, our infrastructure, a lot going on, and we gotta get creative in ways we can try to tighten our belts all the while. And so with that, I wish everybody the best, a nice summer, and hopefully it's a nice long one into the fall, into September.
Thank you, Greg. Ed, I concur with Greg in, again, recognizing your new addition to our meetings, and to that point, Mr. Giroux and the Giroux family, kudos, and stay safe. Thank you for your service. Yeah, so I just wanna really draw our attention, well, echo all of the sentiments that my colleagues offered, but I just wanted to draw our attention, Mr. Hall is going to highlight in a few moments, that this Saturday, August 19th, is the Community Ice Bucket Challenge. I don't know if this is on camera, but you'll see this online all over the place. I just recommend you carve out some time around 10:30 a.m. this Saturday, and go on down to the Rotary Park, and, you okay?
Yep.
Okay, pardon me. And just carve out some time, and go and participate, and be a member of the community there. It's a lot of fun, it's an opportunity to raise some awareness on ALS, as well as hopefully raise some funds. So I will look forward to seeing folks down there and getting wet. So Jeff, if you don't mind going through important dates?
Sure, if you don't mind, before we do that, one of the things that, I just received an email on Friday that I think is timely to bring up, particularly when we're talking about looking at ways to save money, and that is the funds that we will be receiving in the way of a credit through the MIA Rewards Program. So as you know, we have been participants in the MIA Program for a number of years now. MIA is the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association. It's a consortium of 400 cities and towns and school districts that obtain our insurance through this organization, and we have been very active for a number of years now in terms of looking at ways to reduce our losses, reduce our risks. And I received notice on Friday that the town received $47,915 in workers' compensation and property liability insurance credits, which we can use to offset future premiums. This has now been going on for several years, but I think it's, it's points to the fact that we are cognizant of the cost of government, and we're looking at ways where we can make savings. And one of those areas that sometimes doesn't always get the attention that it deserves is looking at ways to reduce injuries, reduce losses, whether they be auto accidents or property damage. So I really wanna put a, an exclamation point on this one, and also point to two individuals that are very key to this effort, one being Dee Casey, who's involved in the Safety Committee, has been since she started with us, and Jamie McGoldy, who's the Chair of the Safety Committee. This group is made up of department heads, which includes the schools as well, and not to belabor the point, but I just wanted to talk about some of the things that they have been doing over the last year to earn this, this credit. We've had bloodborne pathogens training, driver fatigue training at the DPW, safety tailgate meetings where personnel supervisors at the DPW will just pull up on a project, spend 10 minutes just going through with the employees that are gonna be on a roadside project, how to be safe, preventing accidents in the kitchen, a program that was done through the schools, civil rights training, again, through the schools, ambush awareness and practical drills with the police department, defensive tactics recertification with the police department. And in terms of best practices, some of the things we've been doing include vehicle maintenance, playground inspections, pothole inspections, snow policies, tree inspection logs, and the list goes on. So we are looking at, constantly looking at ways we can save money.
Thank you, Jeff. It's, sometimes, those kind of savings aren't sexy, like a big budget cut, but that's real dollars, that it means something, and it's real dollars that are being put back into the operations of the town. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and the hard work, Dee, and Jamie, and the entire team. So thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, I don't know, Dee, did you have anything further to add to that, or?
Just that we also tried to secure grants through the MIA Program as well, and so we were able to get over $13,000 for some trench, portable trench boxes for DPW. So again, in addition to some of the safety training and the best practices, we also always look for grants, and when we meet again in September, we'll be looking at what we wanna do for the grants for this coming year. So we're always trying to maximize, you know, the amount of savings that we can get to the town.
Thank you again. Important dates, Jeff?
Important dates, we have Sundays through October 29th, the farmer's market, Town Common Parking Lot, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. August 19th, as was noted, the Ice Bucket Challenge, Rotary Park, 10:30.
Sorry. If I could just add, on the Ice Bucket, I appreciate you bringing that up. I know several of the selectmen will be there, so if you feel the need to dump ice over a selectman, I will volunteer that day.
I'll help you.
Yeah. There's a few I'd like to, never mind.
August 29th, Jeff?
August 29th is, school opens, grades one to eight. September 4th, Labor Day, town offices are closed. September 5th is the first day for kindergarten. September 6th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8 a.m. to 2 p.m. September 9th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. September 10th, the Hardin Tavern Open House, 2 p.m. to 4 p.m. September 9th, the library resumes Saturday's schedule, 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. Selectmen's next meeting is September 11th, here at the Town Hall, 7 p.m. September 17th is the Chamber of Commerce Half Marathon and 5K Run Walk. September 23rd is the shredding day, Municipal Parking Lot, 9 a.m. to 12 p.m. September 25th is the second selectmen's meeting of the month, Room 9, 7 p.m. Mass Memories Road Show is September 30th at the Wilmington High School Cafeteria, 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. And one late entry to the mix here, received an email from Sean Neville asking if I could just note that WCTV is having a Family Fun Day, which will be on August 27th, from 7 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the Yentile Farm Recreational Facility. Dance troupes and karate demonstrations, as well as music, food, face painting, and balloon animals. It's free and open to the public.
What time is that again, sir?
It is, the 27th, August 27th starts at 11 a.m., runs through 2 p.m.
At Yentile?
At Yentile.
Good. Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. With that, unless there's anything else, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Made and seconded, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much, and good evening.